It's 6:02, and I would like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. I don't have a chair's report, but we will begin as our protocols dictate with the Pledge of Allegiance, so could everyone stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we're going to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations. Does someone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? All right, then that's what we shall do. It should not be long. We should be back shortly. We need to move on then to public comment, if there's any public comment. I'm guessing no, because I don't see any public, so. Any public comment from the committee? All right then. I see review and approve minutes, but I didn't see those minutes in the packet, so I assume we don't have any?
Right, we'll carry that forward to the next agenda.
Okay. Review and approve line item transfers? We don't have that either, do we?
No, turn around.
All right. Then superintendent's report.
Good evening. This summer, we will be transitioning to Class Tag. It will be a replacement for our current platform, School Messenger. There will be training for the administration in July and for teachers when they return to school late August. When the transition of the actual data information is switched over to the new platform, we will be sending out additional information for staff, students, and families. This platform really does seem to be much more user-friendly, and the communications can go to multiple outlets at the same time. So you could get your messages through Twitter, Facebook, email, so that, we're excited about that. And then, like I said, it appears to be more user-friendly. And secondly, with the one-year appointment of Mr. Santry to the role of principal for the middle high school, Albright's 612, we will be reorganizing the administration of the middle high school to include one principal and three assistant principals. One will be interim for the one year. We originally had budgeted for two principals and two assistant principals, so having only one principal, we will be able to find that interim assistant principal position. And that's all I have for the evening.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Burnham? Okay, we have no student representative this evening, so we'll go on to new business, which would be middle school and high school handbooks. Mr. Santry.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight, Tim Santry, Lunenburg Middle School Principal and interim Lunenburg High School Principal. So I have both student and parent handbooks from both schools tonight. I think I'll start with the middle school student and parent handbook, just as a review yearly. The school advisory councils review both handbooks to determine if we were going to make any changes. The major changes that we have this year are in alignment with the primary and the elementary school. Changes made by Mrs. Hanscom, our special education director, around the language of being compliant with our state and federal regulations, which she was updated with an audit this year. So we have those changes in there. And then Mrs. McGuire also made some changes to the immunization language that are in both And other minor changes around personnel or switches that are happening this year, those might show up as a TBA until we can get those positions filled. But other changes were in editing and formatting, so no major changes to policy or homework or dress code or any changes like that. Very similar with the high school handbook, except they have a handbook committee that reviews their handbook. Same changes as we saw district-wide this year with Mrs. Hanscom's changes, as well as Mrs. McGuire's changes to the immunizations. Minor changes in editing and format, but no other major changes to report. So those are the handbooks I'm submitting for your approval tonight. If I could answer any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Santry? Guess not.
Awesome.
So does someone have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Lunenburg High School handbook and Lunenburg Middle School handbook, blocking course by Mr. Santry today.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're double duty there. Two for the price of one. So next, we have carry-forward list of purchase orders. Turn this over to Mr. Cassidy.
Hi, everyone. My Cassidy Business Manager. So in the shared folder, there is a, there's a long list of purchase orders. And for any new school committee member, this is a, these are, this list, purchase orders that have not been completely spent. So a purchase order is our commitment to a vendor that we're going to either buy some goods or services and receive them and then pay them. So this is a long list of POs that are still open. At the end of the year, from time to time, we don't get goods, or maybe some are on back order. And what we don't want to do is relinquish those funds when maybe a supply is just a week away or two weeks away. So the town allows us to carry forward this amount or these POs into the next fiscal year as long as we receive them, and then we can close them out. So this, the amount this year is down significantly from last year. Remember the Chromebook?
The Chromebook thing!
That example is going to live for the rest of my career, which is, we didn't, we, during COVID, we encumbered like 94,000 for Chromebooks. We didn't end up getting them until the beginning of November. So that's a perfect example. So we encumbered the money during one fiscal year, we received it in another, and we paid it with the previous year funds. So what you have here is a list of items that are still pending. I will tell the school committee this evening that the amount of 262,000, 241.32 cents will likely go down. Why do I say that? It's June 21st. We have 10 more days that a vendor could suddenly ship these items, and we can take these POs off the list. At that point, Town Hall will adjust it. But as we stand right now, and not willing to risk losing this money this fiscal year, we are requesting that the school committee approve this encumbrance list or carry-forward list into next year, just so we don't lose the money. Another good example is, you know, we are utility bills. We don't get those utility bills until sometimes late July, and Town Hall has already closed some of those accounts. So we kind of leave those POs open just to cover those costs. So that's the functionality of this, this list. There's a lot of, probably about half of this list is facilities and grounds, which is typical every single year. There is a significant amount to our sped transportation, waiting, once again, waiting for those final bills, those final calculations. And we could get those tomorrow, but we're really at the mercy of the vendor, so we want to carry this forward. So this amount could and will likely be adjusted by Town Hall. And this is a number that will go forward on our end-of-the-year report. So at some point, you'll see this number, encumbered FY '20 funds carried over into FY '22. Hopefully, that wasn't a long-winded explanation. Maybe next year, well, you'll know what I'm talking about. But it, this has been a practice in Lunenburg for years and years and years, so this isn't anything new. I'll take any questions, if you have any?
Any questions, anybody? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the carry-forward list of purchase orders.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you. And I'll send this around to be sent.
All right.
You missed, you missed a big signatory meeting last meeting, so.
Signature event. All right, next is the custodial MOA ratification.
Good evening, my Cassidy Business Manager. So this is good news. So our final collective bargaining group has agreed to a three-year contract with the Lunenburg School Committee. So this is backdated, or it starts July 1st, 2020, and it ends June 30th, 2023. So part of the, part of that is a 3% COLA increase starting July 3rd to June 30th. There is a retro payment that will be coming to our custodians. There's a 3% COLA increase for FY '22 and a 2% in FY '23. The cost for FY '21 is $9,717. For FY '22, it's $20,364. And finally, FY '23 is $14,773. There was, in addition to the COLA, there was a slight language change to adopt some FMLA language in the town FMLA policy. So that will be adopted into their, their contract. So on behalf of the administration, we are looking for the support of the school committee to move forward on this agreement.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Then could I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept and ratify the MOA for the Lunenburg Custodial Union.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you, and thanks for your signatures. Thank you for the support during all these contracts that have been settled over the last few months. It's been, I know you've been part of it, and I really greatly appreciate your time and effort. And I know the, the street coffees.
The street.
There's, each group really appreciates our school committee participation. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Cassidy.
My pleasure.
Okay, next is the Declaration of Access LMHS Textbooks.
Will Mr. Santry come back up?
Yes, so through the budget process for high school mathematics, we've been able to provide some replacement textbooks for high school mathematics, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. Those textbooks are aging, anywhere between 17 and 21 years old. And typically, what we do is when we have an approved budget for textbooks, we take the old textbooks, we box them up, and we donate them to an organization that supplies them to third-world countries. So all of the textbooks at the high school math department have been replaced. There were some psychology books and a world history book that is also aging and has been replaced. And there's a sixth-grade math series that is no longer being used, that's 17 years old, that we are looking to, with your approval, donate to someone who might be able to use those more than we are at this point. Some of those books were taken over with the move from the middle school and have been kind of sitting in closets. And as we end the school year, people pop up and say, what are we going to do with these texts? They're kind of antiquated, and we've already replaced them years ago. So looking for your permission to start the ball rolling on donating those to a worthy cause.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Santry? Then does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Declaration of Access LMHS Textbooks.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to old business, the approval of ESSR priorities.
So Mr. Cassidy and I will co-present the information this evening. So we're looking at this presentation this evening as an overview of strategic spending You can see listed there that there are multiple funding sources that we'll reference through the slides. So just as a recap, you have your ESSR II and your ESSR III. ESSR II has to be spent by September 30th of 2023, and ESSR III, we have an additional nine months. We have to expend that funding by June 30th of 2024. We also received a Plaid for and received an after-school and out-of-school time quality enhancement grant through the Department of Ed in the amount of $24,000, and that is specifically targeted for summer school. Additionally, there was a grant opportunity, again, through the Department of Ed for that Student Opportunity Act, and we will be receiving a little more than $15,000 for that, and that will also be targeting the summer school. And then we have Title I, II, and IV grants. Those are entitlement grants, but the allocations have not yet been announced. We typically don't know what our allocation is until late August, sometimes even very early, late July and very early in August. So a little bit about the survey design and the results.
So just to remind the committee, as part of the ESSR III, it was, we needed input from stakeholders. So we worked on doing a survey to get some input around use of funding for the ESSR funds, so.
Specifically, the ESSR III.
ESSR III.
Required the input, but you'll see that we have taken the input and addressed it through multiple funding sources, not just ESSR III. So the ESSR III grant, as the department frames this, it has three bucket areas, the social-emotional, the academic, and operations. The survey was designed to capture possible models of social-emotional and academic intervention programs, staffing, and other operational needs. So there were multiple choices available to those folks who completed the survey. So in total, there were 306 who completed the survey, and you can see that nearly 76% were parents. The second-largest group, at 11%, were teachers. We did receive participation for folks in all of those areas. First question, I feel the grade span that has been most impacted by the coronavirus pandemic is, and you can see that by and large, most folks felt that it was the pre-K to II that had the greatest impact. Equal are the Turkey Hill Elementary and the high school. And the smallest percentage here is the middle school. I feel the area of academic learning loss in those grade levels which have been most impacted by the coronavirus pandemic is, and you can see overwhelmingly, the top answer was reading and literacy, followed by math. There were some that, you know, spoke about science as well, and we'll get to some of those comments a little later. Question three, it's required that a portion of the ESSR III grant funds be used for academics, which academic program would support the impacted area of loss you selected? And again, overwhelmingly, there was a preference for small-group instruction led by a teacher, followed by in-school targeted interventions, tutors during the school day. Interestingly, there was much less interest in a summer school program or even the after-school Question four, I feel the area of social-emotional supports and learning loss that has been most impacted by the coronavirus pandemic is, you can see that the, at almost 33%, folks indicated the self-management and emotional regulation, followed by self-awareness, self-esteem, and self-image. And then, you know, the third highest was, oh no, is that?
The elderly, thank you.
No, the 20, the nearly 21% was relationship skills. And the 14% is that self-awareness, self-esteem. The colors don't always translate well.
They look different.
They do. Question five, it is required that a portion of the grant funds be used for social-emotional supports. Which position would best support the impacted area you selected above? You can see that there's a little more diversity in the responses for this question, but the two main priorities that were indicated were the social worker or adjustment counselor and the guidance counselors. Third was the extracurricular positions. Question six, when thinking about the most recent CDC guidelines and guidelines provided by the Massachusetts Department of Education for the return to school in the fall, which areas are you confident are in good working order and support the health and well-being of staff and students in our schools? Top two priorities really were the hand sanitizing and our added disinfecting. There was a section in the survey that allowed for additional comments, so I tried to capture them and categorize them. So comments that related back to the social-emotional piece. Folks were, you know, looking to see ADA-trained staff, a focus on social-emotional for all students. Particularly of interest was those kiddos that were in grade two, full remote classroom, they're transitioned back to school in a new school building. Someone suggested that we allocate more than the 20% for social-emotional learning. Others were looking to see a social-emotional learning curriculum in the early grades, clubs and extracurricular activities. You can see the number four there, there were multiple comments suggesting that. Relationship skills for our students with disabilities, social interaction, Contract and BCVA Task Force, more robust mental health outreach, training for teachers on mental health, behavioral health providers at all levels, and another therapy dog. The academic-related comments were a suggestion of smaller class size, additional paraprofessionals and teachers, small groups. There was one comment where they indicated that they didn't think eddesty or online courses were effective. Interventions at all levels in all areas, and two folks had indicated that. In-person learning with no delayed opening and preparation for multiple scenarios. Funding for students on IEP and 504 plans. Someone suggested individual education plans for everyone. I assume that really the intention was individual learning plans for everyone. IEPs have a process, students are evaluated, and they are deemed eligible or ineligible by the team. Focus on high-level learners, less use of iPads, address MCAS anxiety, particularly for the high school students, focus on spelling, and lost science lab skills. These comments related back to safety protocols. Someone thought that sanitizing throughout the day would be important moving forward. Somebody else recognized that the cooperation of staff, COVID precautions, cleaning protocols, and contact tracing helped prevent the transmission of the virus this year. Someone else, again, suggested maintaining the cleaning protocols, which would be beneficial for all viruses. And two folks commented on continuation of hand hygiene, hand sanitizer, or washing hands during the day. Then there's the other category. Someone is requesting that we improve the cafeteria offerings, which we can't address through these COVID grants. Our cafeteria offerings are in alignment with the National School Lunch Program. Address the psychological impact before the academic impact. We need to have air conditioning because the school ventilation is poor, which is not actually accurate. You all received a comprehensive report from Mr. Wanda, who tested the air quality in every single school multiple times this year at Turkey Hill. More physical activity. And somebody noted that they thought that the survey had some biases because we were looking for a certain outcome, but we did put in a lot of options under different categories on this survey. So it truly was not, these were, it was designed more as to what might be allowable expenses with the grant. And then there were some comments that really fell under DESI requirements and guidelines. And you can see that there were a handful of comments that had multiple folks saying the same thing. Someone asked the question, will you be following the DESI guidance for Fall 2021? Someone asked the question, will you be following the DESI guidance for Fall 2021? Yes, we absolutely will. Some folks wanted to have in-person learning next year. It's already been mandated by the state, we will all be back in person next year. No masks, lots of folks spoke about that. And again, right now, there are no COVID restrictions for next year coming from the Department of Ed. They will continue to consult with the medical team, the state COVID medical team, and the pediatricians as to whether or not, at the lower grades where children haven't had an opportunity yet to be vaccinated, you know, there may be some guidance around masking at that level. But the commissioner last week reiterated, all of the COVID restrictions have been lifted. So we should be planning for back-to-school as typical. A couple of folks indicated that they felt that unvaccinated students and staff should continue to wear masks. Others indicated that they would like to see no mandatory vaccinations. Someone else suggested that 12-year-olds and up should be vaccinated. And daily cleaning of surfaces, the Department of Ed has already issued their guidance on that, and there should still be a good disinfecting clean once a day. Somebody else suggested a pause for MCAS for five years. All of these things are listed on this slide because these are things that we do not have control over. These are the things that come from the Department of Ed. So the recommended priorities for ESER III.
Can I just say two things? So the school committee has a document in their Sheehan folder. It lists all the unedited responses and comments for your review. And then just going back to the previous slide, please don't go back. Just remember that there's, the ESER III is, there's two parts. There's a back-to-school plan, and then there's the implementation plan. And I think the previous slide has that address masks and what school looks like is going to be addressed in that back-to-school in-person plan. And we're really going to be following CDC guidelines. So I think that was a very important slide, and we'll address some of those concerns in that part of the application. But this is the part, this is the implementation part.
So again, the ESER III grant has what they've identified as three bucket areas. The social emotional, the academic, and operations. So what we're looking at under social emotional would be an additional guidance counselor at the middle school, an additional guidance counselor at the high school, a social worker at Turkey Hill Elementary. And the social worker at the middle school will be partly funded under ESER II and ESER III. And the request for those after-school activities, again, it fits under here, but we would be addressing it with ESER II funds.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
So I noticed the middle school, high school, Turkey Hill, how about the, what about the primary school?
So what we had indicated when we presented the budget, the proposal, was that we were looking for that license of social worker adjustment counselor over guidance counselor at the primary. Additionally, at the K-5 level, we now will have two school psychologists, one dedicated to each of the lower grades buildings. Additionally, we will be adding a full-time assistant principal in each of those schools, and we still have the BCBA. That said, we still have earmarked in the budget a teaching position for the kindergarten. Right now, our kindergarten registrations are up to 120, which is good. That's still a class size of 20 with two adults, full day with the kids. We're carefully watching the environment at the sixth grade level. It's possible that, you know, a handful more registrations might require that we add a teacher. If neither of those materialize, we would then look to allocate those funds toward the guidance position. The guidance position, if restored, will really focus mainly on Tier One. But there is Tier One already happening at the primary level. They do the responsive classroom daily. And for the last couple of years, they've been focusing on behavior interventions. And they are looking to implement school-wide something very similar to the Ruler program that folks were trained in prior to my arrival in the district. It's very similar, but it's much less costly than the Ruler program. So we think that there are things already happening at the primary level that aren't necessarily happening at the Turkey Hill on out level in terms of Tier One supports.
Thank you.
But certainly, if funding allows, we would look to issue that position as well. Academic. Hiring intervention specialists, that they would focus on both math and ELA, as well as intervention tutors, also focusing on math and ELA, both of those at the Turkey Hill Elementary. And a math specialist for K-5. Originally, we had planned for that to be a full-time teaching position. We would hire a teacher into that role. We had no candidates that were a good fit. So we did some outreach to some of our teachers that are really strong with math. And a teacher agreed that for a stipend, they would be able to provide consultation on content for math. So this next year will be a stipend. Beyond next year, I mean, we can attempt to repost again and see if we can fill the position. Although, if the stipended model is working, we might look to keep the model as it is. Because we are not going to have that full-time math specialist position, we're splitting out the content consultation with the pedagogy consultation. So for pedagogy, we'd be looking to bring in a math consultant to coach the teachers versus the math specialist focused on, you know, the real concrete mathematics and interventions for kids. Additionally, we're looking to bring on another math teacher at the high school. You may recall that when the program of studies came before you, there was going to be an English class that was a co-taught class. Bringing on an additional math teacher would allow for the possibility of a co-taught class, as well as reducing class sizes so that the kids who struggle early on with math, typically Algebra II they struggle most with, class sizes would be smaller. Summer school, this year it's funded in the local budget. But beyond this year, we would look to fund that program through ESER II. And we are looking to use our entitlement grants, our Title I, II, and IV grants to support literacy Tier One and Tier Two. So you can see that the lower list, it's not, we're not funding it in the ESER grant, but we are looking to fund and address these areas of concern with other funds that are available. In terms of operations, we need somebody to administer the grant, that would be a stipend. We consider that behavioral health coordinator stipend to be grant-funded, and it would fall under the operations because there would be some level of supervision provided by that one individual, as well as MTRS and insurance. So any of the positions that we hire with this grant, we have to take funds from the grant and allocate them toward retirement and insurance for the employees that are paid out of the grant. Additionally, we will still have a nurse leader stipend, and those hourly IT techs, and those would be funded out of ESER II. So we had to allocate at least 20% of the grant to the social emotional bucket. The plan that we've outlined for you for ESER III funds, remember, there are additional ESER II funds that are also funding some social emotional positions, as well as our FY22 budget. But 24% of the ESER III funds will be allocated under this plan to all those social emotional opportunities for kids, as well as staffing. 34% would be targeted to that academic, largely saw math funded with this grant. And lastly, the operations budget, which, you know, is, it's a little counterintuitive. Why is 42% of the grant going to operations? It's to cover the MTRS and the insurance. So that, like I said, it's a little counterintuitive. You hardly saw anything on the list for operations, but there is a price tag potentially. So this is a chart that sort of maps out the ESER II and ESER III at a glance. Anything that was a stipend is noted. Things that were covered this coming year in the local budget but will potentially be picked up in following years with one of the grants is also noted. The yellow blocks indicate that we would be using ESER II funds. And the green blocks indicate that we would be using ESER III funds. You'll see on this chart that we're, we've got a nurse, a school nurse position. That's because Katie McGuire will be freed up to continue to monitor any COVID-related situation that we might have for the next year. But then we see, hopefully, no need for that position beyond next year. So I mentioned early in this presentation that there are other funding sources that we are also going to be using next year. We applied for and received that DESI grant for after-school and out-of-school time in the amount of roughly $24,000. And that funding will be targeted to staffing for the 2021 summer program. The Student Opportunity Evidence-Based Grant, that was a little more than $15,000. And that also, the funding would be targeted to the summer program for materials. Our Title I, II, and IV grants. Again, we don't have that allocation yet. But these are the priorities for those grant monies. They would be funding targeted literacy staff, professional development, and substitutes for staff attending tiered literacy academy, as well as some literacy materials. So much of the ESER grant was picking up the math, whereas our title grants here will be focused on literacy. And then I think it's important to note that we already anticipated some of this need. And the local budget already included some positions. Again, that need some of the input that we received from that survey. So our assistant principals, part of their role, being present in the building every day, they are part of the crisis intervention team. They will be responding to kids who are having a hard time self-regulating. We have been using Interface as a mental health referral service. However, we came across CareSolus, which is a different referral service. And they can actually set folks up for appointments with counselors who might be on the other side of the country because they have telehealth visits. We're in a two-year contract for Interface through Keystone Collaborative. So next year is year two of that contract. We're looking to also fund the CareSolus next year so that we can make sure that in fact, it is what we believe it will be before we make a decision not to renew a contract with Interface. So we'll have both available. The nice thing about CareSolus is that students and their families, as well as staff and their families, would be eligible for this service, whereas Interface is for just the community and students. So, you know, our staff are not included in the current model. Again, we discussed this earlier, but we did change that primary school guidance position to a social worker position for the license and the capacity to do some clinical work. We did expand that part-time psychologist to a full-time psychologist. So each school will have a dedicated full-time school site. We are budgeting for some instructional platforms and assessments that we utilized this year. We're looking to continue. Again, we've added that nurse to free up Mrs. McGuire. We budgeted for the health and cleaning supplies. And we did budget for summer school for this summer. Lastly... the Department of Ed announced that they were accepting applications to their academies. So you, we would be working with the Department of Ed in a focused area. And we were accepted into the S E L Mental Health Academy, as well as the tiered literacy academy. So again, more focus on the social emotional and literacy here. Any other comments?
You know, I, I want to update, have an opportunity to update one of the slides. And, you know, when Dr. Burnham said, you know, the, the operational piece is so large. It's like, yeah, it is, it does look large. And I think as we were going in preparing, looking at survey results and preparing the slides, I just would like to give the committee an update on some percentages, okay? So the two guidance councils that were, I had put into the operational piece. Okay, kind of the administration. So those percentages look better, I, I think now. So the academics would be 34%. The S E I would be 52. And now the, the operational is down to 14. So that's a little easier to, to swallow. You know, the administration is taking that big of a piece. But I'll reiterate what Dr. Burnham did mention, that their M T R S automatically comes out for the grant. And then we're budgeting a percentage of the F T Es that were anticipate hiring to keep it away from the local budget and, and that increasing those costs. So I apologize, but I, I, I am glad I had an opportunity to say that publicly and correct it.
And we'll make sure that those percentages are corrected in the slides and posted on.
So that's a good swing. It's not a bad swing, right?
That's a good thing. So we, Mike Cassidy and I were at the Finance Committee meeting last Thursday evening. And there were some questions that came up relative to the S R grant monies. The primary reason for being there was to review the settled contracts. I think, you know, some folks were amazed at the idea that we would close the survey first thing this morning and be able to present a plan to all of you this evening. But as I said at that Finance Committee meeting, we have been monitoring the input that has been coming in for the last week plus. So we were getting a sense of, you know, where this was headed. And honestly, the priorities really didn't align to much of what we had been planning for. We looked at a couple of other things, you know, price associated to one thing or another. It's a big number, that 1.3 million, but when you're spreading it out over three years, it goes pretty quickly. So we did look at multiple positions. And in our minds, prior to all of the input, we took some things off the table. They could have easily gone right back on the table if we had feedback that indicated that that was the greater priority for parents and teachers, students. Mr. Cassidy is wonderful with his spreadsheets. Just drop and drag. We could change it up in a heartbeat.
As long as it goes in the gray color.
So yes, we have been thinking about how to use these monies. For months, we were waiting and waiting and waiting on the S R grant to come out. We didn't want to submit, you know, a proposal for S R two because, you know, they're, they're really going to be intertwined. There are some things that we need to implement that aren't going to fit that evidence-based component of S R three. So again, it's a comprehensive look at all of the funding sources and how can we use those funding sources to target the areas of intervention? Staffing, curriculum, P D. It's the big picture look. Are there any questions?
I just have one small one. Regarding the extracurricular activities, I know that was brought up a couple of times. Are we confident that we have sufficient staffing, especially at the lower levels, to ensure that each grade and classroom are going to have adequate time with unified arts? Because I know, so yeah, go ahead. Just because I know in the past, it's kind of teachers have been, I know COVID has been a huge part of that. But I think with the social emotional issues of these small kids, I think that is honestly a paracuden thing for them to be exposed and making sure that they each have equal time with each of the unified art teachers.
I know that the primary in Turkey Hill worked out of rotation.
Yes.
So that everybody would be exposed to each area. Maybe not the full year in every area, but there's a rotation to make sure that the kids are exposed to all of those areas. Penny, Ryan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I know the money is an important aspect for a lot of people. And I think making sure that the community knows where the money's going and getting that data to say, okay, this is what we've done. This is how we improved. And just kind of that continuous communication with the, the community so that they know where the money's going and what, what progress we've made with that, with the funding. And also continuing that feedback too, getting the feedback from the parents, from all the stakeholders, I think will be key to, to see how this year goes. Maybe we make adjustments, but getting their feedback again, I think will be helpful.
Yes, I agree with the adjustment piece. I mean, we're planning and projecting for three years with this money right now. We may find that some allocation is not meeting what, what goal we had targeted for that and may need to make an adjustment. But yeah, then, then it's an amendment to the grant that gets submitted to the Department of Ed. And I anticipate that routinely at school committee meetings, you'll be hearing about all of the work that's ongoing. So folks will definitely get to see and hear progress and outcomes. And we always, we started now, we post all the documents meetings on, on the website. So they're available for folks as well. Any other questions?
I had a question about, there were a lot of comments. I went through all of the comments this afternoon. And there were a lot of comments about special education. There's somebody who was concerned about advanced children and children with 504s. Now with my teacher hat on, I can see how it's addressed. But for those that don't have teacher hats, could you explain how those things are addressed in this plan?
Sure. So most of our students on I E Ps district-wide are in an inclusion setting. So any support through additional staffing in the classroom, whether that's a co-teacher, and our special ed teachers do go into the classroom and, and rotate through classrooms at a, at a grade level, at the lower grades. The small group intervention and even working with tutors, it's designed for all students. So a student may have an I E P for a different purpose, but is struggling with math. They would participate in some additional tutoring or small group work on math, even though it's not something in their I E P. So we really are looking at everything holistically on this. And yes, 504s and I E Ps are important. And I understand that, you know, parents have been somewhat concerned. They felt that it was difficult this year to effectively implement accommodations in those plans. But our staff did a pretty good job of trying to adapt. And they wrote, they wrote plans, not an I E P, but they wrote plans for each of their special ed students to be implemented this year under the COVID restrictions. Obviously, things were lifted by the springtime and everybody returned to school. And we would continue to service kiddos in the ways that we would typically service. So yes, those kiddos are, they're part of all students. So literacy interventions, math interventions, the social emotional component, you know, it, it applies to all kids.
Now, students that parents feel are advanced or have missed opportunities, those small groups provide opportunities for that type of enrichment as well.
Yes.
That was the only thing I had. So are we ready to make a motion to accept this plan? Or is there any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cassidy.
So part of the vote by accepting the plan is accepting that we're posting some of the proposed positions in this, in this document. So there won't be a special permission to post or anything. It's the positions that were posted, either in S R two or three, you're accepting or granting us permission to post those positions. I just want to be clear with that.
And additionally, all submissions of proposals have to be in by October. By mapping out this plan now and getting the approval to move forward, we're going to be able to post these positions and start hiring folks ahead of others, which really is very strategic. We've been lucky. We were able to find our social workers. So that, that's a big help. That's, you know, one of the most important positions that we'll be funding through various sources next year. So we're lucky. And we wanted to move on this as quickly as possible to get a jump on that.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the extra priorities and that of job postings associated.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for putting all that together. So now we move on to the update of the F Y twenty-two school calendar.
All right, so an error was caught. It was a result of adjusting formatting. You'll see in October, the first fall on a Friday. And it was inadvertently, that whole row was left off the calendar. So it wasn't in the day count by month. So we've added that to the calendar and adjusted the last day of school and those five additional emergency days accordingly. So we're, we're going to get out a day ahead of what we.
A day early. Such a deal.
So if you vote to approve this revision, again, we'll get this posted and out to families as well.
All right. Any questions? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this updated 2021, 2022 school calendar.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. So now we have public comment for any item under our purview. But I'm thinking there's no public, so we'll move right along. Any committee reports? No. Finance Committee did meet on Thursday night. And as Dr. Burnham stated, Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy attended and presented all of the contracts that we had approved and general ideas on the S R grants and took all kinds of questions. And I think that worked out very well. So people once again see that we're being very transparent with all the money issues and budgets. So I thank you very much for that time. The town manager reported on bids for capital projects. And the state has received, the state, not Lunenburg, 3.4 billion dollars from the American Recovery Act. Lunenburg will receive two installments of 614,000 dollars. So these funds come with regulations as our funds did. They can only be used for certain things. I believe that the town manager was indicating infrastructure was a major part of what their plan would be. But those plans on how they will be spent are decided by the town manager and the select board. It doesn't go to town meeting for appropriation. And I just throw this in as a public announcement because it really doesn't have anything to do with us. But the pay-as-you-go bag fee is going to increase for the trash between 30 and 40% on July 1st. So those yellow bags that are expensive anyways will become even more expensive on July 1st. It has to do with the, the haulers are changing. They're moving from Casella to Harvey, I believe. The Casella contract was like a 10-year-old contract. So the last few years have been really cheap in comparison to what we're getting on the next contract. So that is the case. They are doing what I thought was a really nice thing by buying some bags with the recycling money and giving them to the Eagle House so that seniors can get them at no cost. For, you know, they'll buy so many and when they're gone, they're gone. But, you know, trying to understand that this does create a problem for some people. So their next meeting is on 24th of June, just to, okay, meeting minutes. And then they are meeting on the 7th of, the 8th of July to reorganize their committee. So, and Mrs. Bur, Ms. Birchfield's last meeting is Thursday night. And she has been the mainstay of the Finance Committee for quite a while. And once again, I want to publicly thank her for the wonderful job she's done with finance. So did anybody else meet?
I actually have a wellness advisory update just since I wasn't here last week. We met on June 8th. Kylie's Care Kiss will continue over the summer. There's a Lunenburg family that will be continuing under the same name. The middle high school got approved for an extra nurse sub next year, allowing for screening and social emotional support. Students have been lacking since the start of the pandemic. The cafeteria staff will be continuing the weekday grab-and-go summer meals this year. And it's looking like food service will largely be back to normal in the fall as far as trays and the like.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have a meeting? The Passios Committee, they didn't meet either. Okay. So any topics for future discussion? I do want to mention that our next meeting, we said the last time, would be on the 18th of August. I did contact Dorothy Presser. She is available for a workshop on that evening. She told me our ideas equal two workshops, which I had a feeling she was going to tell me. So as that comes closer, she will talk to me about what would be included and which. My gut feeling is that the protocols and the goals and the open meeting law probably is one meeting and the equity probably is another. So sometime this fall, we're probably going to want to put another workshop meeting in. But that, if everybody's still okay with that August 18th date, I have to get back to her and okay it. So, okay. So that's, would be our next meeting then. So if there is nothing else, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:17 p.m.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Then we will see you in August.